... region solid waste planning board. We're here tonight to discuss and vote on the expansion request for Middle Point landfill. We do realize that we're up against a hard stop date of 90 days, so this meeting is going to be a little bit short of 90 days just so we don't hit the 90 day. So I will be willing to accept a motion to something to that effect. Mr. Gore.
Chairman, no one, I make a motion to amend and/or suspend the 14-day policy set forth in our TDEC approved plan in order to permit the board to take action on Republic's Middle Point landfill expansion so that the board is in compliance with the 90-day timeframe for acting on it as required by state law.
Motion and a second. Let's vote by saying aye or nay. Let's, all in favor say aye. Any nays? Motion carries. I emailed out the minutes earlier today and you also have some with you. Anybody want to make a motion on our minutes? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Also earlier today, I emailed two invoices, both were with for the advertisement of these two public hearings, so do I hear a motion to pay those bills? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's on our agenda, but also it's been requested to know how much money we have in our account. There's $10,307.47 and of course it will be less than that amount after we pay these two invoices. Let's start. Ms. Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members, and I ask for your indulgence for about 15 minutes. I have a presentation to make and for the record, this was combined compiled without combination of the board, so in order to present it properly, I need to read it aloud for the members and the board to hear, so I'll be presenting it to you as well. You'll be hearing it tonight. The members have a copy of this in their packets, you're welcome to read along, and then I will stand for questions after I complete the package and explain any anything that needs explaining from that. These are supporting documentation for, or you can call it addendum attachment exhibit for the CTSWPB, that's the Central Tennessee Solid Waste Planning Board Resolution I will propose called Resolution 21-001. From here forward, the CTSWPB is a mouthful, so I'm just going to refer to that as the board. Per TCA 68-211-814-B2B, the region may reject an application for a new solid waste disposal facility or incinerator or expansion of existing solid waste disposal facility or incinerator within the region only upon determining that the application is inconsistent with a solid waste management plan adopted by the county or region and approved by the department. In addition to a review of the June 23, 2021 notice of violation issued by TDEC to Republic regarding the Middle Point landfill, the following TDEC report inspection information is a necessary consideration of the board's decision to reject the application currently presented. Republic has a documented current reoccurring history of the following violations as it relates to the TDEC landfill laws, rules, and regulation. Please note that these are not observations that were noted to be aware of, but rather rose to the level of either a level one or two written official violation. Now what I want to point out, in the past 27 months, Middle Point state inspections have contained the following violations. July 2 of this year, exposed solid waste. June of this year, exposed solid waste. It was noted there were numerous areas with excessive exposed waste. Liche observed at the site. It was noted that it was multiple over 10 liche outbreaks on exterior slopes, one of which has left the cell, another where two slopes meet has liche flowing. Inadequate erosion control. There it was noted that there were excessively deep erosion rails present, some nearly four foot deep. Tires improperly handled, approximately 30 whole tires identified. May of this year, incomplete annual engineering report. Liche sums do not match totals. March of last year, liche entering runoff at Stormwater Pond Number Three, which discharges into the east fork of the Stones River. February 2020, liche improperly managed, exposed solid waste, inadequate erosion control, unsatisfactory litter control. January of 20, liche improperly managed, exposed solid waste, inadequate erosion control, unsatisfactory litter control. December 2019, notice of deficiency. Republic requested alternate daily cover sample. They requested alternate daily cover. The sample detected lead up to 3.2 MGL. TDEC because of that requested a sample of, a larger sample that included the waste to test. Also December of 2019, they received their second violation from October of 2019 where there was inadequate maintenance of liche management system. Compliance level is supposed to be 30 inches. The liche level was 174.1 inches. Liche entering runoff. Again, that's the second violation of those same items that were identified in October of 2019. Additionally, in March of 2019, liche observed at the site and liche entering runoff. My review only went back to 2019. In consideration of the expansion application, a review of the board's 2005-year plan update region solid waste planning summary indicates that to date, the region has not met the mandated waste reduction goals. It indicates that the priorities for the region in the next five years are to increase recycling opportunities. The applicant has cited Section 9.2 with the permit application review of the board's five-year plan as the only basis for review, and this section has not been updated or amended by the region. However, Section 9.2.1 does provide the basis for review for this expansion request. However, we are not limited to the following four questions. They are only the primary questions to answer. Statutorily, our response and research is to be more expansive. The region's 10-year plan, which the board is to use as the benchmark for an expansion application, composes more specific attributes and mission that must be considered by this board, such as infrastructure development, needed upgrade or build collection, and waste reduction plans, and sustainable materials management. Isolating only the primary questions would be a dereliction of duty by this board. However, we'll begin with the primary questions posed and this board's response. They're printed in red for those, for the members that have a copy. The first question, primary question posed, is will the additional landfill volume be needed for the region to maintain environmentally acceptable and cost-effective Class 1, Class 3, or Class 4 disposal volume for the waste generated within the region? The answer is no. The volume of waste generated within the region, which is Cannon, Coffey, Rutherford, and Warren only, will not need this expansion. Once an integrated solid waste program is accepted by Rutherford County, this type of expansion would not be necessary. Please note that 70% of the waste currently received at this facility is out of region. With only 30% generated by the region, the current six-to-eight-year life could be extended to 18 years based solely on the region's needs. This regional board's answer applies to how it relates to the region's needs, not any out-of-region area, as the question applies to waste generated within the region, Cannon, Coffey, Rutherford, and Warren. These marks are in addition to the applicable TDEC inspection violations consideration. Second question. Will the location of the new landfill or extension within the region provide for more cost-effective disposal of Class 1, Class 3, or Class 4 water without sacrificing environmental acceptability? The answer is no. Environmental acceptability is sacrificed already with evidence of refuse along roadside and associated soil absorption, untreated drainage and the associated soil absorption from road sweeping of the waste haulers routes, TDEC bass fish contamination advisory, continual removal of shallow soil from a Lebanon limestone formation area which increases runoff, lowers available green space affecting the air quality, increases the creation instability of sinkholes, low-level radioactive waste disposed in 2008, illegal blasting. The road used to access the landfill, East Jefferson Pike, because of its traffic count, is having to be classified as a minor arterial road, but was never built for such classification and still is not. The City of Murfreesboro Advanced Planning Report, early 2000s, states the road needs substantial investment for adequate usage. Road improvements required at the time of the 2000 report were to expand the current two-lane, no-shoulder road to a five-lane with shoulders. Due to the growth since the 2000 report, the needed infrastructure will need to be updated. This expansion will add to those improvement costs. During a public hearing held on June 28, 2021, 29 people living in a range of 1.1 to 10.6 miles from the Middle Point landfill gave firsthand account to the reoccurring odor emitted and their related problems. Municipal solid waste creates a chemical byproduct. If allowed to continue in concentration and/or duration, it inflicts environmental health, social, and economic damage. A review of the last three years of TDEC reports inspections of this landfill document a continuation of exposed waste. And in addition to the items listed above, there remains an unknown amount of secondary aluminum deposited in the landfill from the mid-1990s to 2007. These deposits elevated the landfill internal temperature resulting in thermal events, i.e. fires. In 2011, a consent order was issued by TDEC for itemized and immediate corrective action for managing the reaction occurring and minimizing the potential for future fires. Additionally, the board has questions regarding the content and concentration levels of runoff into nearby water sources and exhausts in the airway and is in search of independent documentation. These remarks are also in addition to the applicable TDEC inspection violations consideration. Question three, is the location of the facility suitable for a landfill to serve the Central Tennessee region? In other words, landfills which are located at the outer edges of the regions away from the major region population centers and designed to serve out-of-region waste will be considered to be not suitable located to serve the region. Our answer. While the location, when originally permitted, was near the population center in a sparsely populated area, it is now surrounded by densely populated residential and not suited, residential areas and not suited for expansion. Additionally, per the question details, the location is designed to and is serving out-of-region waste and should not be considered and is not suitable to serve the region. Again, these remarks are in addition to the applicable TDEC inspection violations consideration that would apply to this question. Well, the cost, question four, will the cost impact for providing infrastructure, roads, water, et cetera, for bringing out-of-region waste into the county exceed the cost savings provided by the additional landfill capacity? The answer is yes. Currently, the City of Murfreesboro is experiencing a capacity issue within the water and solid waste services provided due to continued residential and commercial unprecedented growth. This expansion would require capacity, additional capacity of the already overburdened service and add additional cost to the city-identified capacity issue solution. Again, the road ish, the road used to access the landfill, East Jefferson Pike, because of its traffic count, is having to be classified as a minor arterial road, but was never built for such classification and still is not. The City of Murfreesboro Advanced Planning Report, early 2000s, state the road needs substantial investment for adequate usage. Road improvements required at the time of the 2000 report were to expand the current two-lane, no-shoulder road to a five-lane with shoulders. Due to growth since the 2000 report, the needed infrastructure will need to be updated. This expansion will add to those, this expansion will add to those improvement costs. Planned road expansion will require acquisition of right-of-way and new setbacks to both the existing landfill and neighboring landowners. This expansion request ignores this plan and will encroach on the needed mandates, needed mandated setbacks and right-of-ways. With the best research, it was unknown to this board that on July 31, 2018, Republic was notified by TDEC that it did not provide adequate financial assurance for the closure and post-closure care of Middle Point landfill, thus failing to fulfill the requirement for permitting as required by state rules and regulations. At the time, the state required amount was $147 million. Republic only provided assurance of $64 million. In the absence of adequate financial assurance, costs above the provided amount by Republic would fall to the county, region, and/or state. The amount increases over time as costs are to be based on current market cost. This expansion will add to the financial assurance required amount and increase the financial burden to the city, county, state, where Republic falls short. Republic's refusal to take initial responsibility as the origin of the odor has already resulted in unbudgeted spent funds by local governmental entities to prove the cause of the odor was indeed the responsibility of Republic. This was at least the second time Republic initially placed responsibility on local government. The 2003 fires, Republic placed responsibility on local wastewater sludge when in fact, the disposal of aluminum was the root cause. Again, these remarks are in addition to the applicable TDEC inspection violation consideration. Should any of the board's answers apply to one or more of the primary questions, or should an answer be more applicable to a different question, it is a request of this board that the answers be applied to all or where most effective. Including the results of a public hearing conducted on June 28, 2021, this extension request is not only environmentally inconsistent with the regional plan, is also socially and economically inconsistent, incompatible with the region plan. That is a review of that first section, the Section 9.2 application review. Additionally, in your packet is more statutory authorized review. This takes into consideration our 10-year plan, and it will apply to the 1994 original plan, the 2010-year update plan, and all the plan updates we've provided since then. In addition to the answers provided above, the board submits the following additional documentation supported by a more thorough review of the board's submitted and approved 10-year plan updates, its mission and specific attributes. Based on the following approved updates since 2013 to the 10-year plan of the Central Tennessee Region Solid Waste Planning Board, told you it was a mouthful, the request application for lateral expansion is also incompatible, inconsistent, and therefore we reject the application. Listed below, again, this refers to any of those plans I addressed a moment ago. As indicated in the most recent 2020 plan update, Rutherford County and Murfreesboro have been working since 2015 with a plan to include disposal, transfer stations, recycling, composting, and waste-to-energy solutions. This expansion request is at a minimum premature as RFIs were announced June 8, 2020, RFPs were available beginning November 9, 2020, and submitted RFPs, which were received February 2021, are currently under review for an integrated solid waste program. It is self-evident that a comprehensive change is currently underway during this fiscal year and will be reflected in the 2021 annual plan update. Furthermore, since 2018, I'm sorry, since 2018, the plan has stated that the future must include new processes. Expanding a landfill is not a new process. Since 2018, the plans have indicated that just landfilling makes changing our habits easier and is an impediment to an integrated solid waste program. Explosive growth in Rutherford County increases annually the tonnage necessary for the attainment of the 25% reduction annual goal. This expansion of a location where 70% of the tonnage is not only out of county, Davison and 26 other counties, but out of region will further diminish attainment goals. Again, the region consists of Cannon, Coffey, Rutherford, and Warren only. The most recent plan update indicates a need for additional recycling, not for expansion of landfill. Since 2018, the plan has consistently indicated that the future solution be an integrated system that is socially, environmentally, and economically feasible. This expansion is not socially and environmentally feasible. Since 2015, the plan has consistently stated the need for a solid waste facility that includes composting, recycling, waste-to-energy, mixed waste processing for RDF, C&amp;D landfill, Class 1 landfill, transfer stations, tire recycling, collection system, education and funding. This is, this expansion does not include these needed items. Since 2018, the plan has stated that there will be a new integrated materials management system. This landfill expansion is not a new system. Since 2018, it has been the intent of the plan for public education to begin for compost facility and aerobic digestion, digestion in vessel. This expansion does not include either. Since 2018, efforts of the plan to increase the waste reduction and diversion are continuing. This landfill expansion does not support those efforts but would adversely affect and hinder those efforts. Since 2018, the plan indicates that Rutherford County has a recycling rate of only 20%, not the goal of 25%. This expansion does not support those efforts and would erase gains made to date. Since 2018, in the plan, Rutherford County has indicated a need to have availability to the railroad. This expansion does not support those efforts. Since 2015, in the plan, Rutherford County has stated that landfilling should not be our first option of disposal. Since 2015, in the plan, Rutherford County has sought waste-to-energy, recycling, grinding, sorting, and any financially feasible solution that is not a landfill. Since 2015, in the plan, Rutherford County has stated that while zero waste is not achievable, a 90% reduction is achievable. This expansion is incompatible with and a hindrance to that achievement. Since 2017, in the plan, Rutherford County has dedicated a committee to focus on reducing waste. Since 2017, in the plan, the three biggest intents of the area are to build a recycle facility, waste-to-energy, and other non-landfill facilities for disposal of materials, leaving landfill facility for the remaining materials that cannot become energy or recycled. Since 2015, the plan has stated that the region must have a disposal solution in place that does not rely on landfill capacity alone. New technologies must be identified and utilized. If any portion or portion thereof of this decision is or becomes invalid under any applicable statute or rule of law, it is to be stricken and the rest of this, this decision shall remain in force and effect. I'm asking this board to consider the information I've put before it. I also have a resolution to read to you that summarizes this. At that point, I will stand for questions regarding the information, but I present it to the board. Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Planning Board, Resolution 21-001. Whereas per TCA 68-211-814-B2B, the region may reject an application for a solid waste disposal facility or incinerator or expansion of an existing solid waste disposal facility or incinerator within the region only upon determining that the application is inconsistent with a solid waste management plan adopted by the county or region and approved by the department. And whereas the board 2005-year plan updated regional solid waste plan summary indicates that to date, the region has not met the mandated waste reduction goals, and whereas the board summary indicates that the priorities for the region in the next five years are to increase in recycling opportunities and increase waste diversion to landfills, and whereas the board update plan updated regional solid waste plan Section 9.2 permit application review, Section 9.2.1, does provide the basis for review for this expansion request, and whereas per TDEC reports and inspections, Republic at Middle Point landfill has ongoing documented reoccurring violations of state law and rules and regulations. Now therefore, the board does submit our response to not only the four primary questions, but also to a statutorily required more exhaustive review of the 10-year plan mission and specific attributes. Be it resolved that the board adopts and submits this resolution and the attached seven-page supporting documentation, attachment addendum exhibit, to indicate that the proposed expansion of Middle Point landfill before the Central Tennessee Region Solid Waste Planning Board on this date is inconsistent, incompatible with the 10-year board plan, and is rejected by the, by this board. Be it further resolved that the board urges the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation to deny the Part 1 application of the proposed expansion of Middle Point landfill, resolved this 9th day of July, 2021. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board reject the Part 1 application for the proposed, for discussion, I move, so that we can discuss this, I move that the board reject the Part 1 application for the proposed expansion of Middle Point landfill, adopt Resolution 21-001, and submit Resolution 21-001 in the presented supporting documentation to TDEC. I stand for questions.
Is there a second? Here's a second. Discussion. Yes, sir.
Yeah, let's don't forget how Rutherford County got in this position to start with. Back years ago, when this was established, you know, the powers that be, which they're mostly all dead and gone now, they promised all the taxpayers and citizens everything was free. Well, I'm sorry, it ain't free. They were sold a bill of goods. So, you know, and then we rock along through the years. More politics, more money. And what I can't understand through all this process and all through the years, where was the impact studies? Where was the environmental studies that Rutherford and the city of Murfreesboro could have went through before this time that they could have curtailed this years ago? But now, at the ninth hour of what we're going through now, here we go back, they're hauling free, but free's not free.
Right.
Initially, the taxpayers, homeowners, are the ones that's taking the blunt of this. And what really surprises me, that you have realtors that go sell people houses next to this, and they do not say nothing about it. That really troubles me. Where's the regulations about that? So, you know, I'm gonna agree with Ms. Barrett, what needs to be done, but, you know, the people around here, they don't need to forget how this all started years ago. I mean, I was fortunate, my uncle was a chief of police down here pretty much all his life, Ralph Vance, and, and the city. I've got family members down here. My wife is from Rutherford County and went to Oakland. I'm familiar with Walter Hill. And remember it in 1973 and what it is now? It's disturbing. And I, you know, I'm from Cannon County, but it still disturbs me. And, you know, I want everybody to take a hard look at this because DFI has not done Rutherford County no favors. And more, they've been a nuisance to the people of this county. So I rest with that comment.
Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Chairman, anything I'm gonna say now will pale in comparison to the extensive comments made by Ms. Barrett. It was excellent research, excellent work. You did a, did a great job formulating what I would probably try to say in just a few sentences, which is, the county since 2016 has anticipated this landfill to be closed. And there has been a lot of efforts in developing a solid waste, an integrated solid waste management plan, and a lot of money spent to try and maybe in lieu of doing environmental impacts, we expected to move, to make a paradigm shift in how this county and this community handled municipal solid waste. So one can argue the technicalities of the process, or we can, you know, look at the form of the 10-year plan, but you can't argue the substance of what's happened over the five, the past five years, which was really this community's efforts to disassociate its reliance on an 82%. That is 32 million cubic yards of additional garbage at Middle Point. In no time in the past five years has that been anything that this community's leaders or this, or these residents have expected to have to handle. So this application to expand to this, to this magnitude took us all off guard. We did not expect it, and we were, we were working towards a more sustainable solution moving forward, which I think, again, Ms. Barrett has done an outstanding job in detailing what's been done. So thank you for your hard work.
The vote has been called for. You wanna do a roll call or you wanna do a a and a?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman. Would you explain exactly what a yes vote is and a no vote to make sure we're getting this right?
Okay. The way the resolution reads.
Shall I restate the motion?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the motion was, I move that the board reject Part 1 application for the proposed expansion of Middle Point, adopt Resolution 21-001, and submit Resolution 21-001.
21-001 and the presented supporting documentation to TDEC. So, a yes vote would be supporting, denying the application, and accepting the resolution and passing it on to TDEC. A no vote would be saying, you don't agree with the package that was just put together and presented.
Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? Ms. Barrett? Mr. Brock? Mr. Bush? Mr. Gore? Mr. Hennessy? Mr. Lee? Ms. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Whitefield?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any more discussion? If you'll look on your desk, I handed out you a handout. I didn't print you, I was in color, I didn't want to spend the money. But if you'll look at the handout, this one, and you can tell by your gray shaded area, the pink area is what they're asking for with the expansion, and it goes all the way to Jefferson Pike. If you'll flip the page and look at the one that says I-4, and look at the shaded area up to the line but does not go to Jefferson Pike. The shaded area is zoned correctly for a landfill, and it is part of what they are requesting, but their request goes beyond that shaded area. Therefore, I move, we deny their request based on them asking for more than they're Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right, let's vote. Ms. Barrett?
Aye.
Mr. Brock?
Aye.
Mr. Bush? Mr. Gore? Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Whitefield?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That again is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, we now have two reasons we're submitting for denial for application, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Any further discussion? Let me clarify that. This board is working to either approve or deny the request for the expansion. It still goes through TDEC, so this board is not the final say. If TDEC determines that we have been arbitrary or capricious, they can overturn what we have done. If Republic chooses to go to court, they can go to court and sue this board for that. So, this is not over. It's gonna take a while.
Could we please construct an extensive or whatever basic information to support what we're doing to the state, so they know that it's not just a resolution, but it's all heartfelt hope for the people?
Yes. Our report, what we plan to send to the state, will have the resolution that Ms. Barrett prepared. It will have that we voted on and approved. It will have the zoning issue that we voted on and approved. And between the comments, public comments and the written comments, there's like 77 comments. And of those comments, roughly 20 were in favor of the landfill, and the remainder were opposed of the landfill. Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
When things are quietly going as you think they should go, perhaps you don't take out time to -- for Rutherford County residents, they can go on their TV station and watch what happens regarding solid waste. You don't even have to get in the car and come down and watch. But I'm just encouraging everybody to realize that this just didn't happen in the last few years. It's been quietly continuing, and it needs encouragement of individuals to keep informed what's going on and talk to their representatives so that this doesn't happen again.
Right. Ms. Barrett?
If I could provide for those in the audience that are questioning, the specific code that references the next process, it states that, as the chairman has stated, "When a region rejects an application, the commissioner shall not issue the permit unless the commissioner finds that the decision of the region is arbitrary and capricious and unsupported in the record developed before the region." That's one of the main reasons you had such an extensive document that was prepared and I submitted before this board. If the commissioner doesn't issue the permit, appeal, well, appeal of final decisions, appeal of final actions of the region, including any determination under this section, shall be taken by an aggrieved person within 30 days to the Chancery Court of Davison County. So, it is, there's still more steps to come, folks, and the statute lays out the process for that.
Mr. Bush?
Yes, sir. Am I to understand that there were three employees of BFI? They initially retired from BFI and got their severances and all that. Did they wind up in the state's solid waste administration?
I'm not at liberty to answer that one. That would be a question for either the state or Republic.
Yes, sir. Well, you know, you just hear some things, and I just wondered if that rumor was true or what. Thank you.
Anything else? Everybody said what they want to say. Yes, what I want to say before that, if you allow me to, is I want to really thank the audience and the general public, Republic Services, and this board. This has been a tough situation to go through, but we have remained professional and courteous, and I want to thank everybody for that. And we'd like to set our next board meeting. Normally, we meet quarterly in the four different regions. We've met three times here recently. I don't know of any other business that we need to meet for offhand right up front. I do know that we will need to meet probably sometime early, late October, early November, because we'll start getting ready for the annual progress reports. Sometime in November, pull your calendars out and look. Let's get ahead of Thanksgiving. Customarily, we meet on a Monday night. We've been on Friday nights, but I don't think we want to stay on those. November the 1st is a Monday, it's the day before, my phone says it's election day, I don't know what elections there are, but anyway, y'all to meet on November the 1st at 6:00. Okay, what about November the 8th? 8th good for everybody? What location? It'd be Monday, November the 8th at 6:00 p.m. Who wants to host it?
My question would be, well, what our agenda is going to be is if it includes a majority of -- perhaps it would be the thing to do, to continue to meet here.
My thought, of course, this is my personal thought, this meeting would be planned to prepare us for the annual progress report process that'll be coming at the first of the year. Depending on what happens after we finish tonight, we may wind up having to have a special call meeting well before then.
I want everyone to always know that everything is open, and even because we're not in another county, doesn't mean you can't drive like we do and come and join us, because staying abreast of everything is going to be important.
Cannon County? Okay. We'd like going to Cannon County. Everybody good with that? November the 8th, 6:00 p.m., Cannon County Courthouse. Anything else that we need to discuss? Second? We're adjourned. Thank you all.